Call the council meeting to order. Please be seated. Motion to reconvene the open council meeting. All those in favor, opposed, and carried. A motion to adopt the minutes of the open council meeting held on January the 18th, 2016. Been moved and seconded. All those in favor, opposed, and carried. And thank you, Counselor Kang, for chairing, I think, your first meeting for me while I was away. I understand you did a wonderful job, so my appreciation. Wasn't nearly as hard as I make it look, was it? A motion to resolve into a committee of the whole. All those in favor, opposed, and carried. The first report is from the Public Safety Committee, and that is chaired by Counselor Calendino.
Oh, thank you. Boards, committees, and, lost my place, from the 2017 Boards, Committees, and Commission Budget to the Burnaby New West Task Force on Sexually Exploited and at Risk Youth to Support Its Two-Year Work Plan, as detailed in Section Three of this report and Recommendation Two, that a copy of this report be forwarded to the Social Planning Committee for information. Your worship, the report gives a periodic update of the work of the committee, which does in the span of two years. It was presented to the Public Safety Committee last month, and it is now here for the benefit of council and benefit of the public that's viewing us tonight. The last update was in March of 2014. Now, as everybody knows, the committee's goals are A, to ensure provision of adequate support, services, and treatment for sexually exploited children, and B, to prevent the sexual exploitation of children and youth. Both of these are lofty tasks in this age of funding reductions, but the task force believes that by concentrating on youth and community education, those goals can be achieved to a certain extent. Counselor Jordan chairs the committee, and if she's up to it after her travel, she may wish to give a few comments of her own at the end. Now, since the last update, the committee has managed to do a third count to get a grasp of the scope and nature of the youth sexual exploitation. And the stats you can all see on page 18, but I think it's fair to say that the number of youth identified at 180 does really not give a full picture of the situation. And the count also points to the reality that sexual exploitation is not done so much by street pimps anymore, but increasingly by boyfriends, relationships, and through the Internet. And this last one, particularly for youth under 17, and also very difficult to pin down. In order to prevent the increase in youth sexual exploitation, the committee carried out a campaign of community and youth engagement and education the last two years. For one, they raised awareness among youth of the dangers of the sex trade and resources available to support vulnerable youth. They also raised awareness among the general public, particularly parents, of methods of preventing sexual exploitation of youth by holding a very successful Parents' Education Evening in April of 2015, and this was done in partnership with the Burnaby School District's Parent Advisory Council, and the topics discussed were safe relationships, consent, and the appropriate use of technology by youth. The committee thinks that this type of parental engagement will continue in the 2016 and 17 years and possibly expand to the New West School District. In addition, the task force hopes to maintain and promote the, in quotes, "where-to-find-411" website, and also work with the youth voice and investigate creation of an app to widen the use of the website. These activities, your worship, require a small amount of funding, and that's the recommendation at the beginning of the report. Basically, that's the essence of the report, your worship. Thank you.
Thank you, and Counselor Jordan.
Your worship, and thank you, Counselor Calendino, for bringing this forward. The committee, as the report notes, is basically representative of the various agencies in the city and New Westminster who work with youth and children at risk in our community, and that involves not-for-profit agencies, the school district, ourselves, Fraser Health, the police, all of them, and it's the only sort of place where all of those folks, you know, come together and discuss the broader issues that are impacting our youth. And this survey that we do every two years kind of gives us a snapshot of how things are changing and perhaps how they're improving and perhaps where there's additional assistance required. And so we use that for lobbying efforts to speak to the government, and as the report delineates, in November and December of this year, the members of the task force met with all four of our local MLAs and pressed them on issues of concern in our two communities, in New Westminster and Burnaby. And one of the things that we were targeting this year is the fact that there is basically being reduced service for young women, and it's to the point where there basically is not any available shelter opportunity for young women that are potentially at risk in this situation. As you know, we used to have a place ready in Burnaby for young women to go, a house where they could go, and that was eliminated quite a long time ago, but there were others. But now it's at the point where recently one in Maple Ridge closed, and so there's basically no place for them to go. So we got quite a lot of support from the MLAs around that topic, and the committee is doing some more work and making some specific recommendations about how we might address that situation in our area, because if there is a young person at risk in the community, the police or these agencies have no place that they can take them at this point in time. So it's quite serious, and that's kind of the focus of the committee's work for the next few months, is to see if we can get some action out of the province and with the support of our local MLAs to make that happen.
Thank you, Counselor Jordan, and I think it's important for people to know that while the city doesn't have a role in social services, we've taken on this facilitation and coordination role in order to ensure that we're getting the best of service from the provincial government and from the agencies that are available to us in our community, and also that we're passing information between all of the people who have contact with our youth, whether it's in schools or our recreation centers. After all, these are our kids, and we want to do as much as we can to make the right people aware of where problems are happening and which children are in danger. And so it is a difficult area and frustrating, I'm sure, sometimes, because we are trying to get resources put into these kids, and there aren't enough. We found that, and there aren't enough safe houses for kids who are in trouble to be able to find respite. And I know it's a difficult job, and we appreciate the work that you're doing on the committee and all of the agencies who come together, and certainly we know that it's our youth centers and school board staff also who are working on this. I think there's a school trustee on the committee, too, working from their end to try to make sure that these issues are raised to the proper authorities. So it does take a village to raise a child, and we do our best to try to help out in ensuring that the right resources are put into the right place. Ready for the question? All those in favor, opposed, and carried. Moving on to the Transportation Committee, Counselor Johnson.
Your worship, on behalf of the committee, I would move that council authorized the expenditure of $10,400 from the Boards, Committees, and Commission Budget for programs to promote Cycling 2016, as outlined on the report. Your worship, I won't go through the report too detailed, but there is money for updating the city's bicycle map, money for the City Bike-to-Work Program, some funds to assist with promotion of bike activities in the school system, and some local community cycling initiatives such as training of new immigrants in bicycles.
Thank you. You ready for the question? All those in favor, opposed, and carried. Moving on to the City Manager's Report, the first item is in regard to the Lowheed Town Center Core Area Master Plan, and this is authorization to forward to the application to a public hearing on February the 23rd. Moved and seconded, Counselor Calendino.
Thank you, your worship. I'm pleased to make a few comments on this conceptual plan that's being proposed to us to go to public hearing. This has been in the process for a couple of years already, and they've had a number of public consultation, both at the mall, I believe, and at City Hall, and it's been there for a long time for people to make comments, and they have received several comments at the actual open houses and also online. I think there was a questionnaire online, I believe, correct me? Yeah, okay. So I'm pleased to support this, and I'm going to make a few comments on the things that I really like about this plan, and the thing that I like the most is the open spaces, the open public spaces that are part of this new development. It won't be a parking lot anymore. It will be a residential area plus a commercial area, and the beautiful thing about it that within those commercial areas and residential buildings will be a whole set of open spaces for the public to enjoy, including a large plaza, which they say will accommodate 10,000 people, but it would if it were as large as Deer Lake Park, but it won't be that large, so I'm not sure I believe that number, but it could be, I don't know. But whatever the number that it will accommodate, I think it's wonderful that they will have actual places where people can gather and meet and enjoy cafe atmosphere and restaurants, et cetera, et cetera. I also like the idea of the Grand Promenade, which links Lowheed Strang Station to Cameron, and part of it, I think, will be covered, and I'm really amazed that it's going to happen finally, that there will be a covered walkway somewhere in one of these major projects we have. So I'm very pleased. I'm also pleased about the several wider features that are part of the development. The only thing that I'm disappointed with is the length of time that it will take to finish it, which is about 30 years, and I really wanted to see the end of it before my days are over. I wonder if the developer is around and they can speed it up a little so we can see the end of it. That's all I want to see, your worship.
Thank you, and I appreciate your comments on the public process, because as we often do, is that this has been a couple of years, and by the time we're finished consulting the public, is that they're saying, "All right, get going, will you?" You can always tell that they've had enough consultation when they're pushing us to move. Counselor McNell.
Thank you, your worship. On the public consultation, I attended a couple of the open houses over at Cameron and that, and the impression I got from the people who were there was that they were looking forward to the change, because the shopping center itself is getting old, it's dated, it's an old-fashioned type shopping center, and they were quite excited about it, and actually quite a few of them did comment what you just said there, was they said, "Well, when are they going to start? You know, why do we have to wait that long? And when are they going to be for sale?" Because they see this as a complete community where you've got your commercial section, and there's a wide variety of tenants that are going to be in there. But one of the sidebars that people might not realize is that when it's all built out with the commercial section, it's going to generate over 5,000 jobs to be in that section alone. So I mean, that in itself is quite a statement to make, that not only are you building a new center in our town center that's got the residential and commercial in the blend with the parks and the day lighting of the creek and everything else, and the wide boulevards. We've made a decision as a city is we want to have that green space, and we want to have gathering spaces. And so when you get into the depth of the plan, you start looking at it, and you look at the seating areas that are there for outdoor cafes and stuff like this, and the walkways and the new trees that they'll be planting there and stuff that is going to be quite spectacular, and the separation between cars and pedestrians is quite good, too. So it is a very exciting plan, and that, and I know it's been about four years since it was first broached, but, you know, we've done a job where we consulted with the public. We went out, we've advertised, the staff has had the boards up here in the City Hall plus the open houses and everything else. And I think even though it's taken longer, I think you get a better product at the end of the day, because you've got the buy-in of the public. They're all excited about it, that's what they want, and when it does get built out, and it'll take a while, because it's such a big project and that, but what it's going to add to that whole community. And not only that, it's because of what we've done several years ago was to bring in the bonus density in the form that we did in that, it's going to allow us to build those new centers over there with the new community center and swimming pool and library and that, which will add and benefit the whole community in that area. So I think this is a real win-win, and on top of all of this is because of the number of rentals that are going to be in there, and approximately half of the residential will be rentals, the same as the Brentwood project. So when you add the two of them together, there's probably going to be 7,000 to 8,000 new rental units in the city that are non-existent right now. So I mean, we know that rental market is tight, that there's not too many vacancies sitting around, and people are having a hard time. It will be market rent, but I mean, that is the cost of building and maintaining a place, is to have a good place like that. But when we start putting these types of numbers of new rental units out there in the market, it will have control on the prices, because it's supply and demand. And when you've got almost a zero vacancy rate, then the prices for rent can pretty well ask what you want and get it. But when you have the competition, you're going to cap that or hold it in line and that, so that's going to help people that are trying to get ahead in rent and that. So I'm quite excited about it, because I see that there's starting units there that are fairly small, but the price is small, that people can start out in the first one. I remember my first house on Rumble Street that I bought in 1964 with three kids was only 900 square feet and had three bedrooms, a living room and a kitchen combined with Eric Nelson you needed in a house. So when people say these are small units, all houses were small back in the 50s and 60s. It's after that we started building these bigger and bigger houses than that, and I don't know if we really need them, it's just it's the way the market is and that. So I'm looking forward to the groundbreaking there, because I think it's going to be exciting for that area and for the city itself. So thank you.
Counselor Jordan.
Thank you, your worship. I too support the plan and the process that we've gone through to get to this point, and I wanted to also reflect just a bit on the community benefits as well, because when people have spoken to me and we've talked about what's happening, they kind of go, "Well, it's not going to be a mall anymore." And I think, "Yeah, it's not going to be a mall anymore." And in place of the mall, it's, you know, basically going to be an entire new community within our city and on the eastern edge of the city and in the Skytrain area, et cetera, right? And it's kind of a very unique opportunity, and I think I want to compliment our staff and the developer and taking the community feedback and everything for coming up with something that is really going to be special and really unique. We've seen so many things going on in the city, and it's kind of hard for everybody to, you know, come to terms with all of that over the past while. But again, I think what's going to be happening at Lowheed is unique, you know, from some of the other larger developments also, and so this is really exciting. And one of the pieces that we struggled with, both, I think, our staff and council itself, and was, "Okay, we're going to be incorporating some new civic facilities using the, you know, density bonus opportunities there, and where will we put them?" And so I think at the end of the day, and as the report reflects, we come to the recognition that we should keep those facilities in the sort of Cameron Rec Center area where they are basically now, that there's room and opportunity to rebuild those facilities. And so that's what the report says we're going to do. We didn't want to go out to the public and say, "We're redoing Lowheed Center," and there might be a library somewhere in the middle of it. So this report clarifies that we will be doing that on the lands that we already owned, but using the funds that will be available through this process, but also in this way we can do it sooner. So we might have had to wait those 10 or 15 years in order to get the phasing of one of those things done. And this way, if we do this on our own lands and at the already existing Cameron Park area, we'll be able to begin building those facilities, you know, very soon. A colleague who lives in the area said to me, "So am I ever going to get to swim in that pool, Colleen?" And I said, "Well, you know, not in the next couple of years." But, you know, so this way, I think, you know, the opportunity is that maybe Counselor Calendino and I will get to swim in the pool, and we'll be able to get that developed more quickly if we do it on our own lands rather than waiting for the whole development to go through its multiple phases. So I, again, I'm really excited to see that, beginning with the Skytrain station and what's proposed in that corner, in that area, and then building back up the hill to see another whole new community starting to develop in our city and that area is very exciting, and I'm pleased to support the report tonight.
Counselor Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also will be supporting the report. I'd like to just compliment and comment on the extensive consultation process that's undergone, that this project's undergone over the last four to five years. I know members of SHAPE, the developer, our staff have all had meetings out in the public, have brought all sorts of different views together, and I think this is one that the public in the neighborhood is quite familiar with, and I think that's really a good selling point. It's funny how we go in circles. 30, 40 years ago, we had kind of village shopping centers, and then we started to build these mega malls, and now the mega mall is becoming, as I say, and we're going back to a village environment where we're actually going to have pedestrian-oriented streets and cafes and community events and shopping all together. And yet we're still going to be able to enjoy the sunshine, or in Vancouver, the liquid sunshine, and I think this is a real positive for this part of the community. I think it's, Lowheed's been one of the more ignored or less developed communities in the past, and I think once this gets going, it's probably going to outsell Metro Town. Be my prediction.
Thank you, and I want to pass on my compliments to SHAPE and to James Chang, architects who've been involved with this project, and I look back on the work that James Chang had done with the city and can remember when he was first involved in our city in the new library at Metro Town. In fact, I think that was his first big commission that he had, was working on the Metro Town Library, and has gone on to be a world-renowned architect and doing some of the biggest projects. And my family was started over in the Stony Creek area, and I love to watch how this is happening in what was my first community in this city. And my kids, I can remember my second son, Darcy, couldn't pronounce Lowheed Mall, and he called it Holy Moly. And he's going to kill me for saying that, but he called it Holy Moly, and so my whole family has always called it Holy Moly. And this is the first time that it's been appropriate, because Holy Moly, this is some project that's going to go in at Lowheed Mall. This is going to be quite incredible, and to think that this community is going to be revitalized in this way over the next couple of decades, and that there are going to be so many new things, an open water course, promenade, a civic square, a new pool, a new library, a new community center. I mean, this is a rejuvenation of this area that is going to turn it into one of the highest-quality neighborhoods anywhere in the Lower Mainland, and it is now going to be the linkage point for Skytrain lines coming in from Coquitlam Center, in from New West Minister, and then delivering people to downtown Vancouver and to the rest of Burnaby. And that, again, is a big asset that's going to make this a hub, a very important hub in the Lower Mainland. So it's a great development, and it's one that I know is going to be immediately sought after by the public. People are already lining up to get an opportunity there. And the other part that's going to be revitalized and made even more vibrant is the Korean Neighborhood that's developed on North Road, and I know they're anticipating this new project and saying it's going to be something quite incredible. In fact, I know a lot of the Korean community are looking for opportunities to be able to get homes or residences in there and businesses. So it's a promising prospect and one that I know that we're going to enjoy going through the zoning process with them over the next years, and I hope they're going to be able to hurry it along so that you can see the end of it, Counselor Calendino, but all of your work will always be appreciated on it. All right. So with that, are you ready for the question? All those in favor, opposed, and carried. Item two is a rezoning reference in regard to a multi-tenant light industrial development in the Big Bend Development Plan, and this is authorization to forward to a public hearing on February 23rd. Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, and carried. Item three. This is a high-rise apartment tower, and there was a public hearing in regard to rezoning reference 1221, and this report is a response from staff to issues that were raised at the public hearing.
Yes, sir, your worship, just taking a second to catch up. So this is the proposed tower of Gilmore and the Goner of Gilmore in Halifax, and it's interesting, because the night of that public hearing, there was a lot of press and attention over another development, but in fact, I think the majority of actual people at the hearing were here about this development, not about the one that got all the press attention.
All the press attention. The bulk of people were here for this development, and...
Yep, but anyway, and there were some significant issues that were raised, and this report purports to respond to some of those. And I think it's indicative of, when people have a little bit of knowledge, but not all of the knowledge, and so when they come forward at a public hearing, they will say that, "Well, someone told me the building was going to be only 20 feet from my window." And so this is the kind of, this report responds to those issues and those kinds of things that were brought up at the public hearing, because if you just heard the comments and the things that people, you know, legitimately were concerned about, then this report responds to those. And that was one of the big concerns, that some people had a feeling or had been told that somehow the new building was going to be right on the property line, and they'd be like, you know, looking in each other's bedroom windows, and this report clarifies that that's not the case, that there's approximately 130 feet between the...
190 feet, yeah.
I'm just reading in... I'm just reading in one part. It says 130. But, you know, but that kind of thing is being addressed. There was some misinformation that was clearly given to some people who asked a question at the meeting that apparently they were saying that, you know, the city hadn't done some processes legally and properly. Those questions are responded to in this. There's also always questions about traffic. There's response to them. And one of the things that is particularly important, and I know from traveling down Gilmore on a regular basis that the corner of Gilmore and Halifax Street is scheduled to have a pedestrian activated signal. And we in the Traffic Safety Committee will make sure that, you know, that comes forward at an early point. So that's one of the issues that was raised, along with others that the report also covers that were raised. And to me, they provide enough of a response to the issues that were raised by the residents, particularly in the marquee tower, in response to, those are covered to my satisfaction that, you know, to receive this report and also later to approve the second reading for the zoning.
You and I will note, Counselor Jordan, and earlier we talked about the Low Heat development and the fact that it would build out over the next two or three decades. And that seems like a long time. But in the case of the Brentwood development is, I know I was around, as was Counselor Johnson, in 1996 for the Brentwood plan. And when people raise, "When did this happen?", is that the plan was made 20 years before this rezoning is coming forward. So it was no surprise to anyone that, in fact, the development would be coming forward at some stage. The problem is often that people have long forgotten the public process that was put in place and are sometimes honestly unaware of the full scale of the development that was planned 10, 15, 20, 25 years before. And one of the good things we do as a city is that we do plan well in advance and that we stick with our plans. And in this case, it's a plan that was put in place a long time ago and is now coming to fruition. And it's probably a plan that didn't happen as quickly as we hoped it would at the time and then suddenly blossomed. And a lot of development happened at the same time. That's often the case. Counselor McEnell.
Thank you, Your Worship. I agree with what Counselor Jordan said is that it was a long night. And there was a theme going about the loss of view and where the building was going to be situated and how close it was and different things like this. And it amazes me that people will take the word of somebody that lives in a building that tells them something and yet they won't take the word of a staff person or something that tells them that that's not true. I mean, it's just the way human nature is. I guess you're sitting around having coffee and somebody makes a comment and the next thing it becomes fact. And I think what it shows, though, is that we did hear what they were saying. And if you look at the number of different issues that were brought up, I want to commend staff for the way they've addressed them all because they were very important to the people that were here that night. And it's important now that they get a copy of this, which they will, because everybody that signed up for that meeting will get a copy of this. And I hope they understand that, you know, we go out and we have the public hearings. We have as much as we can do to make people aware of what's happening. But as you're aware and everybody else in council, so people will come and say, "Well, my real estate agent told me that wouldn't happen. But they never came to City Hall to ask the question." And I don't know what else we can do because we advertise it, we put up signs, we advertise in the papers and everything else. And the community plans are there. And we go through it when we have developments in areas like Metro Town and that. And the community plan said you could do this for the last 20 years. Just because it's getting done now doesn't say that we changed the plan. It just says that somebody's finally come forward and the economics was there that they could make it work. And they're building there now. But I mean, the biggest investment a person makes probably in their lifetime is their own house and their own building. So, you know, I think they should go down to City Hall and ask, "Well, what's planned for that neighborhood?" Because I heard that night also, a couple of people said, "Well, the real estate said, 'Well, the sausage factory is only two stories and the maximum they'll ever build there is three.'" But I mean, why would you take the word of a real estate agent that's trying to sell you some property? You know, I mean, why don't you just go down and ask City Hall? I mean, staff bends over backwards trying to make sure that everybody's got all the information out there and that. So this clarifies a lot of the misinformation that was out there and misunderstanding and whatever. And so I wanted to commend staff because it does take time, it does do work, but it was very thorough. And it shows that when people come and talk at a public hearing, we take notes of the issues they got and then we will respond to them. And that's what it's all about. So thank you.
You and they can be assured that the public hearing, we are listening and we are asking staff to respond. But I'm satisfied that the issues that were presented at the public hearing are fairly dealt with by staff in this report. And I also want to commend staff for the hard work they do to attempt to ensure the development is compatible within any community. You know, oftentimes, people aren't entitled to a view. And that's very clear. It's not something that you buy as a view and not something you are entitled to and entitled to have protected. That being said, though, our staff does everything they can humanly do to ensure that any new buildings that are built provide view corridors and that they try to accommodate that issue of views as much as possible. So while we densify, staff are always aware of the fact that everyone wants to be able to look over beautiful Lower Mainland Vancouver. And they attempt to make that happen as much as possible. But there are always compromises. As new people come into your community and as new development occurs, you find that you're not going to have perhaps the same view that you might have had before. But our staff are consistently working to try to accommodate whatever they can to protect those views. So again, with that, are you ready for the question? All those in favor, opposed, and carried. This is that a bylaw be brought forward to appropriate $2,412,710, inclusive of GST, from Capital Reserves to finance 22 projects in Parks, Recreation and Cultural Services. Question's been called. All those in favor, opposed, and carried. Item five. This is that approval be granted for up to 10 outdoor events at Deer Lake Park Festival Lawn between May the 1st and September 30th, and up to 15 special events at Swangard Stadium between April 1st and November 1st, 2016. Questions been called. All those in favor, opposed, and carried. This is approval to be given to a renewal of a license agreement with the Burnaby Sailing Association for an additional five-year term beginning the first day of March, 2016 and ending on the 29th day of February, 2021, under the terms and conditions outlined in the report. Questions called. All those in favor, opposed, and carried. This is to request amendment of the wording in bylaw 13475, Schedule A, Section 19, food services to read, prices for food products and services are established according to industry practice and market acceptance. Questions called. All those in favor, opposed, and carried. And this is the Negaar Kirtan Parade. This is on Saturday, March 19, 2016. And this is approval of the parade and sending the notice to Emerjit Singh Leal, the president of the Sri Guru Ravidas Saba on Gilly Avenue in Burnaby. Questions been called. All those in favor, opposed, and carried. This is to seek council approval for a road closure for the 18th Annual Do-It-for-Dad Walk Run for prostate cancer on Sunday, June 19, 2016. Questions called. All those in favor, opposed, and carried. Item 4.10. This is to obtain council authority to convene a parcel tax role review panel on March 30, 2016 at 6:00 p.m. Questions called. All those in favor, opposed, and carried. Item 11. This is to obtain council approval to award an HVAC systems maintenance and repair services contract. This is to Honeywell Limited for a total of $1,533,000, including GST and the amount of $73,000. Final payment based on pricing and actual quantity of goods and services delivered. Questions been called. All those in favor, opposed, and carried. Item 12. This is a series of rezonings. And item one is to permit the construction of a four-to-five-story non-market rental apartment building. The subject site forms part of the multiphase development of the South Gate Master Plan. It's been moved and seconded that planning and building be authorized to continue to work with the applicant towards the preparation of a suitable plan of development. Counselor Jordan.
Thank you, Your Worship. I'm kind of, I didn't know whether to speak first on this one or the next one because I'm kind of a pale. But I'm pleased to support this particular authorization and also item two in this, which, as I say, are two development proposals related and tied to each other. And I guess, how should I frame this? When a couple of months ago, we talked about an opportunity to build non-market housing using city lands. And we're working on that through the committee. And now we have an opportunity through these two proposals to add 180 units of non-market housing in our city by working together with the province through BC Housing, the developer, Ledingham MacAllister, our staff, and yourself, Mr. Mayor, who personally intervened at one point and said, "No, we can do better." So what we have here is an opportunity where we're going to take an existing 90 units of housing that are at the end of their life. And I think anyone who knows them and probably those who live there realize that that's the case. And they will have the opportunity to have new housing constructed for them and be able to move into that housing. So this is not the case where it has happened in some places that'll go unnamed, where that housing gets destroyed and the tenants are moved and there's nothing there for years. This is going to be built as a new development. And the people will be allowed to move there. And then the existing area will be redeveloped. And we will get an additional 90 units of housing for seniors on the previous site, on the Cedar site. So it's, I guess, maybe my second most exciting project that I've had anything to do with through the Community Development Committee. And again, I guess one of the frustrating things that we all deal with is that, you know, these things take a long time. The original concept was part of the South Gate Plan when we said we were going to have alternative forms of housing in the new South Gate development. And we said we meant that, right? So as a part of that, this was one of the initial concepts. And how many years ago was that? Four, five? So it takes way too long for us to get all of the pieces of these puzzles in place. But it's complicated. And when you're working with provincial government agencies, when you're working with land values that are going a little bit crazy, and when you're working, you know, convincing the community, convincing the current residents, bringing all these people together and getting them all on board to support a major project like this, it's a pretty exciting day when it does finally all come together. I wish all of this stuff could happen snap of a finger. It doesn't. But it just shows that with the hard work of all of these people working together and saying, "No, we will make it work. We'll find a way," then it can happen. And so I'm very, very proud of everybody that was involved in this. And as I say, I don't know of another project in the region where we can say we got two for one in redeveloping a social housing site. And that's what we've accomplished through this. So for every existing unit, we're getting two. And the city is making a contribution. The province is making a contribution. And the developer is, you know, working with us to accommodate all of that. And so I think it's pretty unusual to make this kind of thing happen. And I compliment everybody that was involved. And I'm proud to have had a small piece of it over that time period.
Thank you, Counselor Jordan. Counselor Walco.
Thank you, Your Worship. I'll try to be brief on it. I agree with most of what Counselor Jordan said. I think that what this demonstrates is the ability of the city and the province and the development community to actually get something done. Counselor Johnson or Counselor Jordan might have been a little hesitant to mention the corresponding example of where something like this should have occurred but didn't. And that's in the neighboring city of Vancouver, where we have, as many of us know, the Little Mountain Housing Project, which eight, nine years ago was demolished. Low-income families were displaced, never to return. And the site still remains vacant. And something creative could have been done at the time where low-income folks could still be living in the city of Vancouver. That didn't happen. And it's happened here. I think this could be an example for everyone concerned that there are ways and that there are folks in the development community that understand the pressures and the issues in regards to what's happening in the housing market here in the Lower Mainland and that there are solutions that can be had. So I think one of the things, as Counselor Jordan said, it may have taken a little while. But I think what this demonstrates is with a little bit of creativity, perhaps a little bit of aggressiveness, perhaps a little bit of willingness and understanding on those in the development community on what their responsibility is. Because it's become quite obvious to most people that at the senior levels of government who have the responsibility constitutionally to be dealing with this issue, here we are in this country, one of the richest countries in the world and the only country in the OECD without a national housing strategy. And we have working people, men and women and families, that don't have a roof over their heads. And that's a disgrace. So if the public sector is prepared to abandon it, I think the onus falls on the private sector to start getting a little more creative in order to house the population of this country. So again, I'm proud of the city, what they've done. I'm proud of our staff for taking a second look at what was originally proposed. And we have come out with a win-win. But I think it's important to recognize when we're doing these comparisons that there are examples in the Lower Mainland where this type of collaboration could have prevented a lot of misery for a lot of folks. So again, I congratulate everyone involved in this project.
Counselor Johnson.
Thank you, Your Worship. I think we also have to acknowledge the developer in this situation, Ledingham MacAllister. When you look at the site that's here, the development site that he is working on has plenty of opportunities. This, I think, is a real perk on the communities gained from this development because it didn't have to include 180, as Counselor Jordan said, units. It could have been the 90 that we mandate. And by working with the city and everybody pulling this leaves up a little bit, we were able to get additional 90 units. So I think that's really a coup for the city and the community of Luserv.
Thank you. And Counselor Calendino.
Worship, and I too want to put my two bits in in complimenting Your Worship and the developer and as well the provincial government that when they take their political hat off and put their thinking hat off, they can actually accomplish something for the citizens, not just in Burnaby but all over the province. And I think that proposals like this can take place as Counsel Walco... And I think that proposals like this can take place, as Counselor Walco has said, in more areas than just this area. And I also want to compliment the developer because the first project that's coming in the Southgate Building seems to be a program for social housing for people in need. And a development that looks not at filling its pocket first, but also doing what's good for the community. And I'm very pleased that that's happening at this time.
Thank you. And I think that if you're going to make things like this happen, it has to be a cooperative effort between the private sector, the developers, the local governments, and the provincial government in finding ways to leverage the assets that are available to us to ensure that we're doing as much as possible to accomplish a goal that both of us think is very important in urban centers. You know, when I look back on this story, it's one in which Lettingham McAllister has been working very hard on the Southgate Project, a huge project and one that's taken a number of years to pull together, one in which we mandated that there would be additional density available if in fact we could find affordable housing projects, not-for-profit, non-market housing that would go into the development. And that's been difficult because senior levels of government have not been putting money into these projects. And as a result, it's very difficult for local government or the private sector to find a partner in the federal or provincial government. Also for Southgate is looking across the street at 14th Avenue. We saw that there were houses that were already, not for non-market housing, but that were in the last stages of their life. And it reached a point where, to be very clear about it, they were an eyesore. And they weren't able to be rehabilitated in any meaningful way. And this was not going to be good for a brand-new development if in fact next to them, they had a project that was in disrepair. So when the idea was opened toward McAllister, the president of Lettingham McAllister, is that he took it upon himself to go and to talk to the provincial government through the B.C. Housing about what kind of proposal might be made to acquire this property and to replace those units and to replace those units in the new Southgate development. And those discussions led us to a position where we were able to leverage the value of the provincial land to such an extent that we were able to provide the monies to not only construct brand-new housing for the 90 families that are living right now at the Cedar Place development, but also to create 90 new units of housing for seniors who would be low-income. That was an incredible accomplishment that took all of the creativity of the developer and our planning department to be able to accomplish. There is a bonus density that we're contributing, and this is cash that we could have taken and put into community amenities, a bonus density of $8.3 million. But beyond that, the leverage that we created, the uplift in property value was some $28 million, which allowed the provincial government to be able to accomplish this new housing without new money coming into the project. They took all of the money in their land, reinvested it in housing and in working with the city, accomplished much more than they ever could have accomplished without us working as a team. We needed a developer that was far-sighted and creative to be able to make that happen, and we needed these commitments. It shows it can be done when we work together. It shows that that effort being made can accomplish more than we could do alone. But these opportunities don't come up often enough. Provincial government does not own significant land holdings in Burnaby or in other cities anymore. We've seen much of that land being sold over the last years. Some properties still remain, like the Riverview Lands, where ideas like this can be utilized to create more affordable or non-market housing. But we seize this opportunity. So I've got to compliment Lettingham McAllister and Ward McAllister for thinking, as they say, outside the box and looking for an original and creative solution that helped their development at the same time it helped our community. And I've got to thank our staff for working so hard to be able to find creative ways to leverage the provincial land and create more wealth out of that land to accomplish these goals. And also to thank the provincial government for being far-sighted enough to recognize that the partner they had in the city of Burnaby had offered them the Golden Chalice, had given them the opportunity to be able to do more than they could have done without being partners. And maybe we've inspired them to look at other propositions like this and to use that same level of creativity to create more non-market housing, either in our city or in other cities. Because this is the only way that we're going to be able to accomplish these goals. Now, I can tell you, if the province and the federal government would put more money into housing, if they would commit more money to housing, this would happen far more frequently and the opportunities would come up far more often. But we found a solution without new money that worked for us here in Burnaby. And I'm very proud of the result. I'm proud of the work we've done with B.C. Housing, with Lettingham McAllister, and the fact that we stuck to our guns in the city of Burnaby until we got what we needed. Not only replacing 90 old units of housing with new housing, but creating 90 more units of housing that will deliver much-needed opportunities for seniors who are low-income to be able to stay in our community. So it is one of those classic win-win propositions. And this is real money that the city of Burnaby is putting into this project that could have gone into other places. Eight and a half million dollars that could have gone into other places. And it's real money that's been created for the provincial government by leveraging those properties. But is that the end result is that there are people that are going to be rehoused in our community in brand-new accommodation, much better accommodation. And there's going to be people who are going to have an opportunity to stay in Burnaby who might not have been able to live here if it wasn't for the effort we put in. So it is good news and one that I hope will provide a model for other places to be able to follow. With that, are you ready for the question? All those in favor, opposed, and carried. Item two is the other piece of the puzzle in this. This is the 14th Street and staff is going to work with them. Recommendations been moved and seconded, all those in favor, opposed, and carried. And again, to Lettingham McAllister and Ward McAllister, thank you very much for your cooperation. Is that this still remains to go to public hearing to see how the public feels about it? And we'll be continuing to work with you. But a job well done in providing an excellent liaison between B.C. Housing and the city of Burnaby to make this happen. All right. Item three. This is 6695 Dunblane Avenue and 4909, 4929, and 4971 Imperial Street. And this is multifamily residential tower, street-oriented townhouses. And this is authorization to work towards a suitable plan of development. Questions been called, all those in favor, opposed, and carried. Item four. This is 3980 Pender Street. Construction of a four-unit multifamily dwelling with parking at grade. Authorization to work towards a suitable plan of development. Questions called, all those in favor, opposed, carried. Item five. This is 2285 Wellington, 4455, 4467, and 4483 Juno Street. This is to permit construction of a multifamily residential high-rise tower with ground-oriented townhouses fronting on Juno Street. Authorization to work to a suitable plan of development. Questions called, all those in favor, opposed, carried. Item six. This is 6921, 6931, 6939, 6947, 6957, and 6965 Arcola Street. This is to permit construction of a three-story residential townhouse development with underground parking. And that this is authorization to work towards a suitable plan of development. Questions called, all those in favor, opposed, and carried. Item seven. This is 4341, 4351 Rumble Street and 7451, 7557 Sussex Avenue. This is the development of non-market affordable seniors' rental housing. This is the Fairhaven Project. And this is authorization to continue to work with the applicant towards a suitable plan of development. Questions called, all those in favor, opposed, and carried. Item eight. This is 4390 Grange Street. And this is to permit the expansion of the ground-floor lobby amenity area and improve the exterior landscaping of the existing 28-story rental apartment development. This is authorization to work towards a suitable plan of development. Ready for the question? All those in favor, opposed, and carried. Motion, the committee rise and report. Been moved and seconded, all those in favor, opposed, and carried. Motion to adopt the report of the committee? Been moved and seconded, all those in favor, opposed, and carried. Bylaws, Counselor Johnson.
Reading, I would move that bylaws number 13527 be now read a second time.
Been moved and seconded, all those in favor, opposed, and carried.
For reconsideration and final adoption, I would move the bylaws 13559, 13560, 13561, 13562, 13563, 13564, 13565, and 13566. Be now reconsidered, finally adopted, signed by the mayor and clerk and the corporate seal of security.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, and carried. Is there any new business? Counselor Daliwak.
Worship, I may have missed this one. I thought there was item number five, which was deferred matter. Were you not going to lift that off the table this time? I don't know if he did. That was the first bylaw?
Yeah, the deferred matter?
Yeah, was that the first one? Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Jordan.
Oh, thank you. Purple pages. There's two items under Section 3. One is for information purposes. One is from Minister Yamamoto about emergency preparedness. And the other, I'll just start with that one. Is this something we as council and the city would respond to? Are staff looking at it? Or is this something sort of UBCM would do on cities' behalf? Or what the manager seems to have the answer?
Staff have this as well and are working on a report for council that would be a recommended position in response by the city.
Thank you, good. And then item E from Mayor Masato of North Bend. It seems to be making some suggestions around the B.C. Building Act issues. And again, I just wondered if staff could review those and see if we could also add our support to those if they were worthwhile suggestions and requests. Maybe refer to staff for the availability of supporting North Bend's positions?
All right. Moved and seconded, all those in favor, opposed, and carried.
Okay, that's all, thank you.
Counselor Walco.
Thank you, worship. On item, the last, item K, the letter from Joan Strauss in regards to the loss of affordable housing. I think everyone's read the letter, but I was just wondering, I know we're getting more and more of these letters which are addressed to mayor and council. And I think I was making the comment earlier on on one of the rezonings about the importance of our senior levels of government to take up the responsibilities in regards to these issues. I'm wondering if it would be too much of a burden for staff in the clerks department or whoever, whatever department receives these letters to perhaps just get a little collection together? And whenever there's five or 10 of these things, because we're getting a number of them, that we could then forward them to our local MLA and also to our local members of parliament? Because I think if they're not aware of it, I know they have broader issues to deal with. But I think letters like Ms. Strauss's in regards to her situation is not uncommon. I think it's a very common situation where people are basically living in fear week to week that they may not be living where they're living because of what's occurring in the Lower Mainland in regards to the real estate market. So I think if staff, I'm not asking for a motion or anything, but if staff can somehow will have a discussion on it, if we can just set some of these aside. And then when we have five of these, just send them off with regularity to our local senior levels of government so they're aware of exactly what's occurring on the ground. Thank you.
There isn't much new about that, is it? I grew up in rental housing in the Lower Mainland and moving was a regular fact of life for those of us who were working poor. As people decided to sell their houses or if they decided they wanted to use them for another purpose, your family picked up and moved. And the reality is that 12 years is a long tenure in any residential situation for rentals. I think that it's very difficult for us to be able to guarantee tenancies. And even for the provincial government, the problem comes that there is nowhere to go. That's where the difficulty occurs. And I think we're going to continue to have that battle as long as, as was pointed out earlier, we have very low vacancy rates and very little in the way of affordable or social housing available for people to go to. That's one of the biggest problems. And so it's an ongoing battle. I'm happy to have staff forward this over to our local MLAs, but I know they're just as frustrated with the problem as we are. And until there's more money from federal and provincial governments coming in, I don't think we're going to be able to find any reasonable solution. But we will. Counselor Wang.
I just take this opportunity to share some good news. This year's Lunar Chinese New Year will be on the February 8th. That is the Year of Monkey. So we noticed that there are many Chinese New Year celebrations in Burnaby, that including in Branwood Town Center, Lohe Town Center, and Crystal Mall. So actually, the Chinese community already celebrating the Chinese New Year. So last night, one of the local Chinese community, CCSE, Kiling Community Service Association, they had a big Chinese New Year gala in Chinatown, one thousand people gathering. In the past 14 years, they already had this kind of event. And also they host like a special festival and the Chinese Cultural Festival in Suangarh last year. Won 10,000 people gathering in that event in the summer. So last night, the CCSE, they present Community Achievement Awards to Mayor Derek Corrigan for his achievement and accomplishment for the community. So I'd just like to share this very good news and contributions for the mayor's, for his big, big commitment and contributions to the community.
Thank you very much, Counselor Wang. And I'm very, very honored by the award that was presented. I wasn't here last night, but I know that you attended and received it for me. And please pass on my appreciation. I'll be writing to them and thanking them. But it is a great honor and a privilege to receive that kind of commendation from the organization. It's very much appreciated. And congratulations, this is your year, you're a monkey.
Yeah, I'm the monkey.
You're a monkey. So I always thought you were a little monkey, but this only proves it. And it sounds like the right motion to make. It's been moved, seconded, all those in favor, opposed, and carried. Happy Year of the Monkey.